Was it one that's been meeting that if you sort of find that the signs are saying? There's a, I think that they're expecting, um, September, September 11th. Um, it's not, it's, it's, they are acquired. The next one was raised this time. If you so do, is it, is it come or get some more top? So, uh, down, uh, I should, it's, uh, I'll, I'll get some of your ideas.
Seven. Good evening. It's Thursday, October 6th, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting for the Planning Commission of Goochlin County. Ms. Parker, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was great. Gracious God, thank you for our men and women in uniform who made it possible for us to meet here safely. Bless and keep those who still do. Thank you for this time to gather, to take care of the county business. We pray that you grant each of us the wisdom to be good stewards of the community. Please be with each person here and give them guidance. Be with each of us as we travel back home. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Minutes, anybody have any discussion or anything to say, or should we approve?
I move with President.
A second. Motion and approved. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, I'll open it up to the citizen comment period. Anybody who'd like to come forward and speak may do so, but not pertaining to any of tonight's events.
My name is Zane Staley. I'm an attorney in Richmond, Whiteford, Taylor, Preston Law Firm, beginning to do a little more zoning work out here in the county and wanted to come and make an introduction. And so, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Jackson, Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannikin Road. At the Tuesday Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Cash did a really good job presenting a proposed, I'll call it an ordinance or guideline for solar collection facilities and solar storage facilities. And the board, you have probably been advised, are going to kick the can down the road to you guys. And my encouragement to the Board of Supervisors was to provide as big a forum or as frequent a forum for community input. Speaking somewhat from an agricultural perspective, there seems to be a low-cost solution for many of the solar collection facility constructors to spend the least amount of money in putting these facilities in place. That oftentimes involves the use of agricultural land. Whether or not brown land reclaimed, trash dumps, or quarries could be used would be a lot more, I think, logical for something like that. But I'm also a property rights person, so I'm not going to tell somebody they can't do something, not that I could tell somebody they can't do something with their property. But I would encourage that you provide as many opportunities, and I don't know what your latitude is, in community meetings and public meetings. It is a bit of a third rail. I personally like the idea of solar energy. I also like the idea of agricultural land staying agricultural. I have gotten accustomed to eating at least one meal a day, and invariably that comes through the agricultural community. So when that gets to you, if you are able to expand the public hearing or the community input, I would encourage you to do so. If you can't, we'll find people who want to come and speak for three minutes and keep you here for until two or three in the morning. So, not that I'm suggesting that would ever happen, but thank you very much.
Thank you for comments. Ms. Parker, do we have any requests to defer?
No requests to defer, additions, deletions, or changes to the order of the public hearings.
Thank you. Public hearing items.
Our first is 2022 District 5, 2011 District 5, CU 2022 12, application by Stephen and Laura Maestrello requesting a conditional use permit for a detached accessory family housing unit on 15.01 acres at 6 Roads End Lane on tax map number 67100240. The property is zoned residential limited R1. The conditional use permit is required by county zoning ordinance, Section 15152, in accordance with Section 15285A. The comprehensive plan designates this area as single-family residential medium density.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Jamie Sherry, Director of Community Development. The first application we have this evening is an application by Stephen and Laura Maestrello for an accessory family housing unit detach. The property is located on the southeast portion of the county, specifically in Lower Takahoe subdivision. The property is zoned R1. The comprehensive plan designates this property as single-family residential medium density. This is an aerial of the property. You can see the main structure right there. That will be helpful when we go to the site plan. So, the applicant is proposing a secondary house on a 15-acre parcel. As I mentioned, there is currently a house on the property, but there's also a pool house and several outbuildings. The new house, the detached family house, will be on that blue, where it's marked blue. It will be to an existing garage. They're actually proposing to have an addition that includes the house as well as a second garage on that, on that same building. The applicant's parents will be living in the new housing unit, and they will access the property through the same driveway the existing house is. There was a community meeting back in August. Board Supervisor member Mr. Spoonhauer and two citizens were in attendance. The citizens that were in attendance were supportive of this request, and we also received one letter supporting this application. The following conditions are recommended if you choose to recommend approval. The first one allows for a detached accessory family housing unit with certain limitations that include only residents can live in the second dwelling, and that you cannot rent either the house or the second dwelling individually. Safety measures include providing carbon monoxide detectors and smoke detectors and allowing for, and maintaining, emergency access. This is an application with conditions that have a five-year renewal, so they would have to renew this by the end of November 2027. And lastly, the transfer or ownership, which requires them to notify the county if they either lease or sell the property. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is also here. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions.
Does this fall into, into the homeowners association for Lower Takahoe would have some say in the matter also?
Um, they have, the applicant can speak to this more, but at the community meeting, it was, they did have representatives there, and their actual property, which if you saw in the aerial, is kind of a big piece towards the end of the lot, for some reason, the covenants do not pertain to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for having us tonight. My wife, Laura, and I'm Stephen Maestrello. The purpose of us having a detached house versus attached to a main house is the fact that our garage is detached from the house. And so, for this in-law suite that we're building, we'd like it to be in conjunction with the current garage. As a result, it becomes a detached home, which then leads to all of this complexity. But it's a relatively small in-law suite for aging, my aging in-laws and my wife's parents, and I don't foresee there really being any, any issues with it, frankly.
Gentlemen, did you have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions.
We'd just like to take care of mom and dad.
Yeah, thank you. We understand.
Nothing else, then we'll have a, we'll be seated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody, does anybody wants to speak to this, or?
Good evening again. Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannikin Road. I was one of the two citizens that attended the community hearing. I was supportive of it at that time. Nothing's changed, so I'm still supportive of it. And I hope, I've not really seen this commission ever not recommend approval on something that is a detached family auxiliary unit. I think that the operative word for me in this is the word "family." You know, that we've got some interesting times going on, and when you see somebody who steps up and says, you know, "I want to take care of family," that's a pretty strong statement. And I, I don't know that I would have the fortitude to do that for my in-laws. You know the saying, that God gives us family so we don't fight with strangers. But I think that they are expressing a real sense of family. I hope you will approve it. I would be chagrined if you did not, but I've learned never try to predict what a planning commission will do. So, I do hope that you will continue to keep that detached family unit string of yours alive and vote for approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion? Motion?
I have one more question. If this, if this was attached, this would not be a case?
That's correct. This would not be required to have a conditional use permit.
Would this be an addition?
It's an addition. There is an affidavit requirement that the county has, that they come in, when they get, when we get the building permit, they just sign an affidavit basically saying that it would be for family use.
Thank you.
I got one question. It always bothers me, what happens, and it's always inevitable, that the people living in there pass away. So, they can't, the only person that could go in there is another family member.
That's correct. That's the way the conditions read.
They can't use it if anything else?
Well, they can use it for a non, as a non-dwelling. I mean, they could use it for, you know, they could use it as a storage building, like remove the, the kitchen and have it forever and ever just be a storage building, or, you know, they don't have to remove, but they just can't have anybody living there that is not family.
Under the current CUP, they could come back and get another CUP and do something else with it, or apply for one.
So, I believe the ordinance does allow for, if you want to rent it, it would be a question that they could bring before you, and you can make that choice. I think that's part of the use standards.
Okay. New application.
I move we approve it.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion to recommend approval passes on a 5-0 vote. This case will be heard before the Board of Supervisors on November 1st, 2022, with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. Our final item tonight for public hearing is 2022 District 4 and 5, 2011 Districts 4 and 5, CU 1989 00014B, application by Columbia Gas Transmission LLC, TC Energy, requesting amendment to conditional use permit CU 1989 00014A to expand the existing natural gas compressor station on 29.6 acres at 1436 Hermitage Road on tax map number 5810240. The property is zoned agricultural limited A2. The conditional use permit is required by county zoning ordinance, Section 15112. The comprehensive plan designates this area as rural enhancement.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. The next application is for an amendment to a conditional use permit by Columbia Gas Transmission. They are basically doing some expansion, some pretty detailed expansion of their existing CUP, and so that's why they're required to be back here this evening before you. The property is located in the eastern portion of the county. It has a Hermitage Road address, but it's just off Hermitage Road. As you can see here, the property is zoned agricultural limited, as is the property to the north, east, and south. It is rural, residential on the western side. I'll show you on the aerial. The property is designated as rural enhancement area, as is all the adjacent property. And here is the aerial. So, as I mentioned, it is off Hermitage Road. This is actually Hermitage Road. There is actually a driveway. It looks as though it is on the Hunting Ridge, I'm afraid I can't read that, sorry, road, but it's actually on a driveway that goes beyond that. So, just a little bit of background, the compression station actually predates the zoning ordinance, so we know it's at least 50 years old. Back in 1970, after our ordinance was amended, they did a small expansion, and so we've required them to get a conditional use permit. It was amended again when they added additional compressors back in 1989. Most recently, it was before this board in 2017, when they added a delivery station for Point 4, the city of Richmond. And they're before you tonight because they are proposing another expansion and some, I guess, upgrades to the facility. So, more specifically, I'm going to just run through this so I make sure I don't forget anything. They're going to replace the existing natural gas piping, replace the existing combustion-powered compressors with electric motor compressor units, install a new electrical substation that will aid those compressor units that are now electric, construct a new building to house the new compressors, construct new auxiliary buildings and structures, enlarge a fencing area to enclose the new compressor, and relocate internal driveways. They are also proposing to have a temporary laydown to be used for materials during construction. So, temporary laydown yard. The laydown yard is necessary due to the replacement of the buildings and piping to be installed. There is a large enough area that exists so trees can remain. There will be some areas where a tree will be removed to provide for the laydown yard, which will be covered with gravel. They will be required to cover that area with grass and do some replanting of trees during the plan of development, portion of their development. They'll need to get a plan of development to show this, and at that time, we will look and see what is required for the, to maintain the buffer. So, there's a lot going on, on this slide. This is actually a staff embellished version of it, so bear with me as I make the description. So, the shaded areas show the new areas that, to the top here, this is where they'll be expanding their fence area. This new building right here is to house the new electric compressors. The existing compressor station in several of these buildings will remain. As I mentioned in the previous description, they are proposing a new substation, electric substation, to actually run the compressors. This is an aerial photo of the laydown yard that was provided by the applicant, so I have a couple other pictures that might help you describe a little bit better. So, here's the existing site, so it's actually along the existing driveway. They're going to be proposing two entrances to an area that, as you can see, is pretty much already cleared. So, they'll be entering this way and exiting this way as they're doing the construction for the laydown yard. This will be the driveway that leads to it, and this is what it currently looks like. These are some of the views from right now. So, this is actually from the driveway, as it states. The one for the laydown yard is actually looking from the, where the new driveway entrance will be, and behind those trees are where the existing substation is. So, as you can see, it's already pretty well screened. This is actually within that area, so you would approach the facility off the driveway and then pull into the existing driveway where there are existing buildings. And then, the other picture is just an aerial. So, just for clarification, the natural gas service limitation, so the Virginia State Corporation Commission regulates natural gas and defines the service areas. Columbia Natural Gas is the provider that serves Goochlin County. The applicant, Columbia Gas Transmission LLC, has a similar name, but is a completely different entity. So, during this process, there's, they don't have the ability to then provide connections within the county based on the change on this facility. There was a community meeting held back in August. Six citizens attended. They were generally supportive, as long as the noise, construction traffic, and buffer impacts are properly mitigated, and staff has received no opposition to this application. So, as I had mentioned, this application has gone through a couple different versions as it's been amended over the years. So, some of these are housekeeping, some of them are because the existing condition no longer pertains. So, I'm going to go through these and kind of explain them. Of course, number one is our saying that this use is actually allowed. Number two talks about the improvements that are shown on the two exhibits to allow for the fencing and the other new structures. Let's see. Number three states that they will need to get a plan of development approved before they can start construction. Noise emissions, so this is not a change. This is a noise emission that was detailed when this was originally approved. They have specific details as far as what they are allowed to, the noise that they are allowed to emit, and it goes for a couple of, we included that just because it's actually part of the conditional use permit. Back in 2017, when they proposed the expansion, where they were doing the expansion to the city of Richmond, they actually did do a sound and noise study at that point, and it was within the CUP requirements. The applicant will probably be able to speak to this a little bit more, but it's my understanding that turning to electric compressors, actually, it could mitigate some of the sound that comes from there even more. There's also conditions that talk about glare and lighting, parcel diminuation, I guess is how you say that. Basically, they're able to, of the 29, if they're not using all the 29 acres, they can sell a portion of it, and they do not need to come back in and redo their CUP, as long as they are still meeting all the conditions on the CUP. The aesthetic buffers, I think I'd mentioned probably a couple times already, that they will have to go through. They are doing some taking down of some trees, and they are providing a landscape plan before you now, because, you know, we don't have the official plans. But when they do the plan of development, they know exactly what is coming down. We, as staff, will make sure that it meets the conditions that are before you. And the laydown yard, as I mentioned, they are going to need a temporary laydown yard, and they are doing this during construction, and there are some specific conditions that relate to that. So, they have one year to have the construction, so they will be able to have the laydown yard for a year. And then, they do have a replanting plan that is also part of anything that could be taken down. Number eight is the hours of constructions. We've added that because it is going to be a rather long construction period. They have six, I mean, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and there's some details as to what they can and can't do during that time. And then, lastly, our standard transfer or lease, which requires them to notify the county if they, if they sell the property or lease it to another entity. That concludes my presentation. I'm able to answer any questions I can, and the applicant is going to be able to answer any more technical questions, their applicant as well.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Sherry.
Okay.
The applicant like to speak.
Go come on up. I'm just going to explain to you real quick. If you need to go in your mind, the back will back it up to the correct.
I won't mess with that because I'll break it.
I'd have my son here to do that for me. Appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you. I'm Cedric Klein. I'm the area land representative, and I'm the project land project manager for this specific project. Have with me Mr. Rodney Kimball. He's our project manager. Knows everything, so, good question. Also, we've got our local dispermit specialist, Kevin Pennigwood-Duberry, just to kind of walk us through some of the stuff, paperwork and stuff like that, and be a guide for us on this, so.
Just curious, since you're switching to electric-powered compressors, is there going to be a problem when there's a power outage?
Well, actually, what we're doing, the main driver is going to be electric-driven. This is a new technology that's out there, that if you want to go online, look up a dual-drive technology. What actually is happening, there's two motors. There's a caterpillar, gas-driven motor, and then there's an electric motor that's going to drive the compressor. The primary driver will be electric. That's what we're permitting through FERC. The gas-driven motor is there only for emergencies. It's only going to be permitted for 500 hours, and that's how we are reducing our greenhouse gases and also getting reliability. So, the plan is, if everything goes great, we don't have any storms, we'll be on the electric, and then we'll have the backup if case if we lose the power coming into the station.
Their engine, is that run on natural gas?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The compressors are currently run by turbine engines?
Current, current technology is turbines, yes.
And it's, so, is my understanding, years ago, that they're pretty easy to change out, is this going to still be easy to, I assume y'all are making your job easier, not more difficult?
The maintenance is going to be actually more because we have two drivers there. Therefore, we have to maintain both drivers, the electric motor and the gas-driven. You know, we'll have a maintenance plan for both, and we'll have to maintain those maintenance plans based on, you know, the technology and what has to be done to keep those units running.
So, it's not easy?
It's not easier.
I mean, where you were just using your own gas before to pump your own gas, now you're having to do something altogether.
We just have to, we deploy, we defend, we have to rely on the, you know, electric grid to keep us running, which is why we're starting to use this new technology of having dual drives. As we know, a storm comes through, wipes out the grid. We have to have some way to get the gas to market, keep families warm, keep, keep customers moving.
And I gather that this gas is only for Henrico and beyond? No, not serviced, there's no service to Goochlin, correct?
Not for us. Columbia Gas of Virginia, which you mentioned before, will be, they have limited, I'm not completely sure of their coverage area, but I do know they cover Goochlin County, and they do receive gas from us at a different location.
Okay.
So, the city of Richmond added in their facility there, where they pull gas directly from us, runs through their system to wherever their customer, again, somewhere off Broad Street in that direction.
Okay. And this is natural gas as opposed to liquid propane?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got two, I guess. One is, I've got some good friends that live on Hunting Ridge Road, and they've complained about the gas trucks not using the gravel road. They use Hunting Ridge Road.
Not for our facility. With all the, we don't, there's not a gate that they can do to access our facility off Hunting Ridge. They can only go, well, the picture's not, the picture she showed there runs off Hermitage, and there's a gravel.
There could be some confusion because I know I've done it before. If you, if you're not familiar with the area and you're baking deliveries, you can miss that gravel road and go down the next road. But as Cedric said, there is no, there's no entrance, no entrance into our facility off of the main road there.
They just said some, they do get a fair amount of traffic on Hunting Ridge going to the, I don't know what they're doing.
It's not for us. It's, there's no way for them to access, there's no way for equipment coming to our facility to come off Hunting Ridge to go into our lot. There's no access for them.
The second one was the noise. They've complained about the noise. Is this, it's there now, or is it going to be actually loud?
As you know, this unit, this facility's been here for 50-plus years. It's block buildings, it's actually got asbestos on the roof. The new buildings that we're putting in, the new compressor building, are being designed per the current use permit, so it's to meet all the recommendations and stuff that's in there today, and that's what we've designed to, that's what we've bought to, and we'll have to meet that. We, we have to hit 55. 55 dB per FERC. That's a FERC requirement. We're probably talking louder than 55 dB right now. So, FERC has a requirement to get 55 dB. What we have to do is, within 60 days of us going in service, we have to do a sound survey, a live sound survey. We have to go out on site, do a survey, measure the sound at the closest houses, and we have to report that back to FERC within 60 days. If that does not meet 55 dB, we have one year per FERC to get that within 55 dB. That means either redesigning, adding more insulation, sound walls, whatever that takes, we have to get that to 55 dB within 12 months of going in service. So, that's how we designed it. That's the good part of a new facility is that we have to design to current standards, which are usually more strict than they were 50-plus years ago.
Well, you know what it is now?
I do not, probably have as a company, but I do not, off the top of my head now.
So, we don't know whether it's going to be quieter, all louder than what's there now?
General thoughts, it will be, it's going to be quieter. The first two things is, it's turbines. Turbines are loud. They squeal. If you ever heard an airplane take off, obviously you probably have, they squeal, and that's exactly what's sitting in that building, a turbine like you have on an airplane. So, these are electric motors, and they, all general purposes, we feel they'll go be lower.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to come and share with you folks.
Thank you. Opening up for public hearing, anybody want to speak to this? Oh, buddy, close the public hearing. And gentlemen?
I move we recommend it for approval.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion to recommend approval passes on a 5-0 vote. This case will be heard before the Board of Supervisors on November 1st, 2022, with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Any old business?
No old business, no other business.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
A move.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.